Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Select Board.
I'm muted, everybody.
I'm sorry. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of March 18th, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. I'm sorry, this is my first night as Chair, as Clerk, so.
Sorry, I'm muted.
I'm not even, I'm obviously not on. Okay, so let's try this one again.
Okay, you know what I have to do first?
Yeah.
May I have a motion for a Clerk pro tem, please?
I move that Sarah Corbett act as Clerk pro tem beginning now.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, yes, thank you. Now, you have been voluntold, please do a roll call.
Okay. Present with us tonight is Ms. Quirk and Ms. Whiteside, you and me, Ms. Corbett. And Town Administrator Derek Sullivan, and on remote is Richard Bowen, our Town Counsel.
I squirm.
Who is, who is absent? Who is absent? That would be Ron Bessie. Mr. Bessie, and? Chairman Chadwick. Chairman Chadwick. But I'd.
Lord Chadwick.
Chairman Chadwick. Nope, still didn't tend to do it.
That's okay. We might have to change who's a Clerk pro tem. Okay, we're gonna, oh, I declare that there's a quorum present. May we have the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Quirk?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Resident comments, is there, are there any residents here or online who choose to address us on a non-agenda item? Thank you. Announcements, Ms. Quirk?
None. Yes, I have some.
She practiced these, so she ought to be good at it.
On this, I'm reading from a press release by Wareham Media, formerly known as WCTV. Save the date, March 28th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., it will be an open house and mixer at 505 Main Street, which is their headquarters, and RSVP to WCTV staff at warehamtv.org, or just go to their website and you could find out how to do that. So in Wareham Week, I saw that the Wareham Library Foundation will host its fourth annual Comedy Night fundraiser on Friday, May 2nd, at Stone Path Malt Tap Room on 11 Kendrick Road. Doors open at 6:00 p.m. and the show begins at 7:00 p.m. The event will feature performances by local comedians, with proceeds benefiting the foundation. A pub menu will be available, and a cash bar will offer beer, wine, hard seltzer, and soft drinks. Raffles and a 50/50 drawing will also be held. Tickets are $20, attendees must be 21 or older, or you can go to Wareham Week website itself and look for that story. Also, in Wareham Week, there is a beautiful picture of an adorable little girl named Madeline DC, dancing and jumping rope at the same time, which I tell you personally takes, obviously, you can't do two things at once, it's really hard to do two things at once. So it is really, really, really a beautiful picture, and she's an adorable little girl, so I just think she's adorable. I got an email from Sharon Rice, who's the Director of the Council on Aging itself, and she confirmed to me, because I was at this meeting where this happened, I'm the Council on Aging Liaison, Board of Director Liaison, and the current Board Chair introduced at a meeting the fact that he would like to bring the Silver Alert Program to Wareham. And Sharon goes on to say, "We are aiming for May 1st to start this very valuable program. Chief Korea has been working on the forms. I believe the goal is to have folks go right to the PD website to input info into a form there." Or the desk officer will, you can just call them and the desk officer will directly enter your information directly into an iPad, and they can take the person's photo to upload it right to the file, so that they'll have this information right at their fingertips if, God forbid, you should ever go missing. I'm going to see if the Council, and this is Sharon speaking, I'm going to see if the Council on Aging can also get its own iPad to connect info into the system so folks can come here as well, which is awesome. So testing on the email notification list has already begun, so we're well on the way. So that is just a phenomenal, phenomenal program, and kudos to everyone involved in getting this up and running in Wareham. Yep, this still has, it happened, it had, it happened, I wanted to go to it. It was the Cape Verdean talk, and I was sorry I missed it at the library. In preparation for life after high school, the event, noted Credit for Life, has been done annually in conjunction with Cape Cod Five Bank to help high school seniors understand what financial decisions they might have to make after high school. And I, my, both my boys came up through this program, and they're both well into their adulthood now, and they're both really, really good at keeping track of their money, but I wish I'd had that earlier, so I do appreciate that. I'm a member of the Community Events Committee, and I would like everyone to know that there is, I know Judy said this before, but as a member, I would really like to be able to remind everyone that there is funding available for community events. The Wareham Community Events Committee is now accepting funding applications for events for the 2025 season. All funding requests must be submitted by Thursday, April 18th, to be considered at the committee's April meeting. Which I think now is on the 24th. Applications will be accepted until available funds are depleted, and early submission is recommended. Applications can also be scanned and emailed to Linda?
Gay.
Thank you, gay. Guidelines for applying are available on the Forms and Documents page of the Wareham Town website, or at a link that goes directly to Wareham Week. On Wednesday, March 25th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m., you can sift through the past at the Wareham Free Library for an organization that is being sponsored by the Friends of the Wareham Free Library. I am a friend, I belong to the Friends, and I believe wholeheartedly that our Wareham Free Library should be supported, and I urge you to go to that. And last but not least, in Sipican Week, I saw that, because I read all the Weeks, because I used to be a Triton reporter, and Wareham reporter. Buzzards Bay Area Habitat for Humanity seeks metal ramps. If you've got an old lamp, ramp lying around, the Buzzards Bay Habitat for Humanity is looking for donations to help local disabled and elderly residents. The Ramp Donation Program gives, aims to give residents the necessary equipment to stay in their homes and not have to move into assisted living facilities. That is an awesome program, and please go to Sipican Week and check out that story on their page, and that's it.
Thank you. I have a couple. Those of you who go to the high school or the middle school have seen what I would call a complete remake of Spalain Field. The town of Wareham is not paying for that, the Wareham Gaetman Association is paying for that, it's more than three quarters of a million dollars investment in a town field. And I'm going to read some town boards and committees, and how many vacancies they have or will have, because if your term is expiring, you don't automatically get reappointed, you have to apply. Cemetery, one, community events, two, golf, five, Board of Health, two, Historical Commission, four, recycling, two, Affordable Housing Trust, two, Alternative Energy, two, and two, Associates. Right, Associates? Library Trustees, three, Community Preservation, two, Conservation Commission, two, Council on Aging, four, Cultural Council, three, Historic District Commission, three, and three Alternatives, Alternates, Historical Commission, four, Minnet Forest, two, Open Space, three, and Veterans Council, six. So there's a lot of opportunities for people to volunteer their time and learn a little bit about the town. I'm going to skip to the application for Krabby Coffee, or the people are here, right, Maxwell Wood? Can you step forward, please, and identify yourself? Just make sure the mic is on. Can you identify yourself at the record?
Yeah, I'm Maxwell Wood, I'm the owner and, I guess, chef at Krabby Coffee.
Cool. Can you tell us a little bit about your business?
Yeah, I make bagels from scratch, it'll be daily, Montreal style. My dad is Canadian, so that's like, it's a heritage thing for me, I guess. Yeah, and we, our partnership with Speedwell in Plymouth, we wanted to go with like a local roaster, so that's the coffee we'll be serving. And I'm just out of college, I'm 22, and I'm, this is kind of my first business I've run, but I'm very excited, and I have a marketing degree as well, I guess, that's kind of all I have, but.
Okay, great, any questions, Mr. Wood?
What's your timing for, for opening up?
This license is the last thing we need, so honestly, hopefully tomorrow.
That, that gives us incentive, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say.
What is a Montreal style bagel?
Yeah, I wanted to know that.
Honestly, they're not too different. Really, it's a little, a little bit more dense, and it's made with a different syrup. I think it's like a barley malt syrup for New York style bagels when you're boiling them, and you're going to use maple syrup and honey instead, so, yeah.
So those are 40-pound bagels.
It's the water is the difference.
Awesome. Okay, thank you very much for choosing to do business, I will accept a motion in Wareham, I'll accept a motion.
I would like to do that, but I cannot find the words that you told me to say.
Okay, so I'm going to miss, I can't. I move that we authorize the Common Vic License for Krabby Coffee LLC, DBA Krabby Coffee, Maxwell Wood, the manager, 2 West Central Avenue, onset, Mass. 02558. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Common Vic License. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. You will be able to pick the license up tomorrow in the Select Board's office, which is on the third floor of Town Hall. And congratulations, and have fun.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The manager for Chili's Bar and Grill, we have a change of manager, can you come forward and identify yourself for the record, please? Thank you. That's okay. Could you, you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, my name is Elizabeth Pisano, I am Counsel for Chili's from Optin, Cornell, and Devlin. This application is for a change of manager at the Chili's Restaurant here in Wareham. The new manager is Anne Marie Mello, as you met briefly. Unfortunately, she had to head out for a family emergency, so she's not with us right now, but she has been at the Chili's location for the past three years as a general manager. Prior to that, she worked at another cafe for nearly 15 years, so she has plenty of experience in the food and beverage industry. Chili's does go through intensive training with their staff and their management, so she has taken the Responsible Alcohol Service Program in class and has gone through the testing required through their corporation to make sure she is familiar with all the rules and regulations relating to the sale of alcohol, and can manage her staff properly, you know, to help them identify, you know, underage individuals, making sure they're carding properly, how to handle specific situations, and things of that nature. She's a U.S. citizen, Massachusetts resident, and I am happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Can you spell your last name for me? Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Pisano?
Not for me.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes. The, I did meet the proposed manager, and she did have a family emergency, but I think that it's appropriate that she cope with a family emergency.
Thank you, appreciate that.
No problem.
So I move to approve the application for change of manner, manager to Anne Mello, for Chapter 138, Section 12, All Alcohol Restaurant License Held by Pepper Dining Incorporated, doing business as Chili's Grill and Bar, pending all?
Documentation.
Documentation.
Fees.
Fees.
Inspections.
And inspections are approved.
And I believe everything is in order, so.
Okay, great. If there's anything else that you need from us, just let us know, but I'm pretty sure we sent everything.
I think everything's all set. Motion made and seconded to approve, is there any further discussion on that motion?
I thought it was Chili's Bar and Grill.
I thought it was Chili's Bar and Grill, too.
No, no, I'm like, I don't know if one of my law clerks did that backwards or not. I know. Should be Bar and Grill now.
Yeah, so that's what our motion was, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
No, it says on the business entity form, it says Pepper Dining, Inc., DBA Chili's Grill and Bar.
It does, okay, so we had it right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
We like to emphasize the food.
That's good. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as requested, and the paperwork is all in order, I checked it. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Yes, aye, it is so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The office will notify you when you can pick stuff up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We're going to go quickly, quickly, Mr. Slaven. I did promise the Coalition, Mr. Decker, that we would be 7:15, so you have three minutes.
I have more than three, why don't you take care of him?
Come on forward. Yeah, okay. Come on forward. Would you identify yourself for the record? This is Alan Decker from Buzzards Bay Coalition, and you have a presentation for us.
Correct, yes, Alan Decker. Okay, thanks. Alan Decker of Buzzards Bay Coalition. Not so much a presentation as an announcement that I'm here to talk with you about the conservation restriction to be placed at Little Harbor Golf Club. Because, as you may know, but just for, kind of for the record, because the town used Community Preservation Act funding to make the acquisition of the property, the statute requires that the property be protected in perpetuity through a conservation restriction. The town came to the Coalition and I asked if we would be interested in partnering with the town in protecting this property. We absolutely are and will be, and are very pleased to be here tonight. Conservation restriction took a while to get through the approval process with the state, I don't want to belabor any points there, but they are a little backed up.
It took two years.
Yeah, it took, it took a while, ma'am, yes, it certainly did, Madam Chair. But in any case, CR has been, Conservation Restriction has been approved for local signature, so that's what brings me here this evening to answer any questions you've got about the conservation restriction, or, or anything having to do with the process moving forward. But as I said, we are, we're very pleased to be able to partner with the town to keep this property as a golf course, as it stands right now. The, the conservation restriction clearly allows for that use into the future, and we're pleased for that to continue for as long as the town would like it to.
We had, you did give us a map, it's small, and that's fine. Can you explain what a conservation restriction, that the envelopes that are within it, that there are certain areas that are exempt from that restriction in order to like?
Sure.
Build a building, or, you know?
Absolutely, and if it, if it helps, Madam Chair, I have, believe me, that plan is convoluted to look at, to save, to save the least. I have an aerial, an air photo map that, that lays out the, I didn't send it, I did send it to the town, they, I don't know if you have it to put up, but I'm happy to hand them up in paper form, if you'd like to see, because it just.
You must have it. Yeah, okay. Go ahead, just, so just explain, yeah.
No, absolutely, to answer your question, there's 57 and a half acres of the property that are protected by the conservation restriction, that is the entirety of the ownership by the town. As the Chair mentioned, there is an area, a single area of four acres, right around where the clubhouse is located, that is designated as a special use area. It is part of the conservation restriction, but within that four-acre area that is depicted on, on the plan, the, the town has flexibility with what's in that, in that four acres. Right now, it's the parking area, the septic field for the clubhouse, and the clubhouse itself, and I believe maybe one or two other golf-related structures. The town has the flexibility to do with those improvements as they see fit. They can start over with a new clubhouse, expand the existing clubhouse, alter it, whatever, whatever they want to do, you can add additional structures for golf-related purposes, you can expand the parking area, all of those flexibilities can happen in that area where they cannot happen outside of that area on the rest of, on the rest of the property, which is the course itself.
I just have one question, because I, the pump houses and stuff, I thought they had to be, the, the water pump houses, and I thought that had to be taken out as well, and I thought the garage structures were going to be.
So any other existing structures outside of the four-acre special use area will be documented in the baseline documentation report.
Okay.
And as existing structures, they can remain where they are and perform the function that they're currently performing. So there is also a reserved right for, let me, let me get the exact term, because it has to do with the irrigation system itself. There's the ability for the town to continue to operate that, and it's the installation and maintenance of an existing or a new irrigation system, and everything that goes along with operation of that system. So that, that element is covered.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. What I'm asking for this evening is for your assent and approval of the conservation restriction, as, as the grantor of it, we will accept it, and then we would get it on, on record at the, at the Plymouth Registry, but I'm looking for a vote by the town to grant the conservation restriction. And I have a signature page to hand up if you don't have one, but I imagine you do, but I'm happy to hand one up if you'd like.
Any questions?
What happens if the town decides for the golf course, not the special use area, that it wants to use the area for a different purpose?
So that can, that can absolutely happen, there are limits to the different purposes, though, they would need to be for passive recreation, there's no additional development that's possible on the, on the, on the course itself, but any other sort of passive recreational use could happen there. There's also the reserved right for agriculture to happen there on the property, no definition, well, there's definitions of what agriculture means, but it's expansive enough if the town chose to have a farm operated there, or some sort of community farm, garden-type experience, that could certainly happen as well. Active recreation would not be possible, by that I mean a basketball arena, or courts, tennis courts, those types of things, those, that, that use has been closed out by the conservation restriction, but certainly passable, passive recreation, community use, it will remain publicly accessible property.
What about walking paths?
Absolutely.
Sheri, are you going to bring up what I'm thinking of in my brain?
I'm not sure I know what you're thinking, but.
Okay, this is going to sound hilarious, but it's actually really cool. Urine diversion, right?
That's true.
Your great big legal brain, I think you should explain what that is.
Well, urine diversion is an issue that's actually being pretty actively discussed in this town and elsewhere, where you separate streams of waste? And use them for purposes that they are best suited for. The, the urine, and we're talking human urine, so, is actually a very good fertilizer. So it is a bit of a subject for exploration in this town and elsewhere, you know, capturing urine and using it for, for cultivation, for, because it's, it's nitrogen-heavy, and it replaces other commercial, less environmentally acceptable fertilizers. So it's, it's a thought, we do understand there's discussion in that area of the need for, you know, additional, an additional plant, or other, other waste treatment, just, just an idea that Sarah and I have been exploring with others in town.
So there's, the question is, would that be allowed under, in the four-acre parcel, I'm guessing?
So, oh, it's a treat, some sort of treatment plant or treatment facility in the four-acre area? There is, so it's my understanding right now that the clubhouse is serviced by a septic field, and the conservation restriction allows for the replacement of that septic field, should the, should the town choose to do so. It can be placed in, in that four-acre area. It would need to be nitrogen-reducing, but it can also be designed to capture off-premises capacity as well. That's not to your question?
Right.
That is about wastewater, if you will. I think the, let me take a look. I think the use inside, well, let me look before I, before I speak. So, no, so right now, the way the special use area is, is, is talked about is because the property is, is being used as a golf course, improvements in the special use area have to benefit the use of the property, so that would be, that would mean golf-related. I don't know that a urine diversion processing plant or something, or facility could be placed in the, in the special use area. I don't know that for a fact. We'd be happy to work with the town to see if that, if that sort of a, a use would be allowed on, on the property.
And is it already a nitrogen-reducing septic?
It is not.
Okay.
And it, and it's functioning, there, there's no issues with it right now, but if, if it were to be replaced, it would be required to be a nitrogen-reducing system.
I thought you were working with the town.
We did have the study on it for taking, it doesn't look like it's appropriate.
Okay.
For the location. Some of the golfers do perform urine diversion on the course, but we frowned upon that, so.
They should be rewarded for that.
I would like to interject into this moment of hilarity. Scott Sobey, if you're listening, he did an amazing presentation in front of the Sewer Commission that I happened to stumble upon when I was clicking channels, and I just watched, and it was so good, it was really, really good. So Scott, if you're listening, or Millie, if you're listening, reach out to Scott, please reach out to this young man before us, and help him and maybe the rest of us understand what urine diversion consists of, because I thought it was ridiculously hilarious when I first heard the name, and now I'm a big fan.
I'm aware of it, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm definitely aware of it.
Okay, good, great, thank you.
Okay, let's get back to business here, which, the, the, you're, you need us to grant you?
You do, well, yes.
Yes.
The town meeting would like for you to do so, to comply with.
Okay.
With the CPA statute. Town meeting would like for you to do so, to comply with, with the CPA statute. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, the motion would be to have...
I think you, if, not to interrupt...
Go ahead, please, do it.
If, if the motion were to grant conservation restriction over the Little Harbor Golf Course to the Buzzards Bay Coalition, in compliance with the town meeting vote, I think that would cover it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second.
Town meeting vote.
It was, yeah. Any further discussion on the motion?
I will only make the comment that it's amazing that it's taken this long for this issue to come back. This was, as I recall, acted on when the...
It's February.
Yeah, when, when the town acquired the golf course. So, it's, it's, it's a bit.
It's been two years.
It's been done up now, though.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, yes. If you have the paperwork there, we'll sign it right now.
Oh, fantastic.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
Yes?
We'll have you change places.
You're going to make him move?
Yeah, we're going to make him move.
Here I am.
There are you. Not respectful.
How loud can we copy the little?
I know.
You know that.
Yes, it is.
Where's the Ellen thing? Right here? Raise your right hand, ladies. Yes, it is.
No, it's fine. I know you, and I'll be able to attest to it.
Thank you so much.
And what I'll be happy to do, to share, once it's new, I'll send that page back.
Yes.
For the record.
Thank you so much, and...
Get it on record, and be on our way with you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Decker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, before us, we have Mr. Slaven, who has written two warrant articles for the town meeting, regular town meeting, and they have to do with the capital planning committee. So, Mr. Slaven, if you could explain what they are, and what you, yeah, the articles are in front of us, but, introduce yourself for the record, please.
Thank you. Alan Slaven, Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. I'd like to thank Mr. Sullivan for making me be here. I'll get back at you later. Okay, I would ask, basically, the select board, have they ever looked at the five-year capital plan? Understand what it is. Do you know how it works?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven, I'm sorry, but you are here to explain...
Yes, but in order for me to, in order for me to explain what I'm doing, I'm asking whether the board understands what I'm going to do. If they don't have any idea, it makes my explanation longer. That's all.
Do you understand what capital plan is?
I do understand what a capital plan is.
Do you?
I do understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back 17 years ago, Town Accountant, Don Bliss...
This is a short version.
This is a short version. I'm trying to educate the public as well as the board. I went before Don, I said, Mass. General Law says the town should have a capital planning committee. Don's answer to me was, Alan, we don't have any money, so why bother? At that point there, I got ahold of David Trudell, who was the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, and we put this together. The basic setup for a capital planning committee is to constantly run an updated five-year plan of the needs of the town for what is considered capital items. The, the way that works, also with the part is that the capital planning committee is supposed to, with the town administrator, town treasurer, town accountant, come up with ways how to pay for all of it. It's nice to ask for stuff, we have to figure what, how are you going to pay for it? We've only implemented the first half of that program. We've never gone past the second. Just so everybody understands, the capital planning committee gets from the different department heads what they need, in a timeframe when they need it. What happens is, it then goes to the town administrator, who makes the decision. The capital planning committee makes no decision on what he does. He either uses free cash, borrows, or, in some instances, it has to be a debt exclusion. And that's how that works. The reason for these articles is simply to update and correct what's going on after 17 years. One of the articles is basically to set up the mix of the board, following the request of the town administrator, to also allow for a designee for him, town treasurer, and town accountant.
Mr. Slaven, for those who may be following along at home, what number article are you speaking to right now?
I have no idea. I was never given that. I submitted...
14 and 15.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, if you look at that, it just basically explains the membership, how they're appointed, and the ability for, like I say, those three, those three positions to use a designee. It also, basically, what it does is, it puts the town accountant, which is required on the board, but it's a non-voting ex-official member, because you'd have to keep the number odd, which is seven. The second part is basically, on the bylaw section, is that our dollar values, what's considered a capital item, go back over 20 years, which is completely off of what's actually the real world today. So, what I've done is, we've come through, and we've increased the values in order to qualify for capital. It allows the town administrator to put on the individual budgets of the different departments, items that normally really don't belong on capital, that town meeting has to vote on. It's that simple. That's what you have in front of you.
Excellent. And that has been recommended by the capital planning committee?
And the state.
And the state, and Mr. Sullivan has no objections?
He asked for part of it.
Okay.
No.
No? Okay. Any questions?
No.
No. Thank you. We voted to recommend favorable action last, our last meeting, so we were jumping the gun, but thank you for the explanation.
Just as a quick note, and I'll get out of here. We had, for the Finance Committee, the, the ambulance service came in, and because of the two additional senior projects coming into the town at large volume, and the, I think it's the Gosnell Center, which takes care of, you know, drug addicts, et cetera, they expect to increase their volume substantially, so they've asked, they asked for a fourth ambulance, just so everybody knows. And the other thing is, we asked Scott, who's done a great job at the Water Protection Control Facility, getting things up and working properly, what in the next 20 years do we expect to have for cost for that facility, or whatever we need? Just so everybody understands, it's $1 billion.
That was a B, not a M.
That was a B.
Isn't that exciting?
So... That was not, that was... That was not an official, written, reviewed, that was, I just didn't make sure, that, because you're going to get Scott in trouble here.
No, I just asked the question, he said that's what he thought it would be.
Okay.
And you also notice you have the police station in there, in this listing at 16 million, and again, that will most likely be a debt exclusion.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven.
Anytime.
Okay, let's go back to...
So, yes, if the news is listening, we did not approve, did not request a billion dollars.
Yes. We're going to do 8B. 8B. We're going to go back to 8B on the agenda, which is a renewal of a common vic for embodied nutrition. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the application for renewal of annual common victular license, embodied nutrition. Jalen Palo, manager, 3147 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Mass., 02538.
I second.
Motion made in seconded to approve the renewal. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Now, we have some seasonal, seasonal liquor licenses under Chapter Mass. General Law 138, and you have two that I believe you're going to do.
I move to renew the seasonal liquor licenses under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, for the year 2025. All of the businesses listed under the heading Seasonal Package Store Licenses, all alcoholic beverages.
Which includes NAP Liquor and...
Which includes NAP Liquors, Inc., doing business as The Jug Shop, 219 Main Street, Unit G, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. Sorry for the mispronunciation, ahead of time. Pakage Corp., doing business as PK Liquors, 3074 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Massachusetts, 02538.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve those renewals. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. We have one here.
Yes. I move to approve the seasonal restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages, for Project Half Shell Incorporated, doing business as Cohog Republic, 197 Onset Avenue, Onset, Massachusetts, I also move...
Nope.
Nope, I don't do that.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. On your first motion, and on this one, you also included the words, "Subject to the receipt of all paperwork, fees, and inspections."
I certainly did.
Okay. That was included in your second, right?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Any further discussion on that motion for Project Half Shell? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Next would be the seasonal restaurant, wine and malt. Oh, yes, go ahead.
So, for Onset Beach Patio and Grill? Okay. So, I move to approve the seasonal restaurant license, wine and malt beverages, for Main Street Deli, LLC, doing business as Onset Beach Patio and Grill, 182 Onset Ave., Wareham, Massachusetts, 02538. Pending the approval of all of the things that need to be approved.
I second.
Motion made in seconded to approve subject to. Any further discussion on that motion?
And we're all square with them now?
No. The ABCC has not yet made a ruling.
Okay.
And we have called them, and written to them, so...
But we're never, we're just going to go forward with this?
Yes, we have to, well, yes, we do, because the paperwork is in order for this renewal, and because there is an action pending, doesn't mean, we can't hold it up because of the action pending.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank, oh, it is so. Next, the seasonal club license?
Point Independence? Okay. I move to approve the seasonal club license, all alcoholic beverages, for Point Independence Yacht Club Incorporated, doing business as Point Independence Yacht Club, 15 through 17, Independence Lane, Onset, Massachusetts. So moved. Subject to further of the pending things.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes, I second that motion, which is subject to pending inspections, approvals, forms, et cetera.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Now, we have... Three, and you're not, you're going to go, you're not going to do that one, and you're not going to do that one.
Yes. Okay. I move to renew the seasonal common victular licenses under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, for the year 2025, for Project Half Shell Incorporated, doing business as Cohog Republic, Eric Bevins, manager, 119 Onset Avenue, Onset, Massachusetts. Point Independence Yacht Club Incorporated, doing business as Point Independent Yacht Club, Gregory McCunt, sorry, manager, Independence Lane, Onset, Massachusetts. XJ, Inc.?
No.
Nope? No, still have to do that one. Okay, forgot. Main Street Deli, LLC, doing business as Onset Beach Patio and Grill, Frank Evangelista, manager, 182 Onset Ave., Wareham, Massachusetts, 02538. XJ Incorporated, doing business as Sand and Surf, Gerald Sylvia, manager, 13194 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Massachusetts. So, subject to the pending of all of the things that need to be approved.
And I believe you read the address for Cohog Republic incorrectly, it should be 197 Onset Avenue, but is there a second to her motion?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve those. Any further discussion on those? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. And next, we have some seasonal entertainment licenses, weekends only, weekday, excuse me, weekdays only, and you are not going to do that one, but everything else you are.
Okay. What is the address for Cohog Republic? It says in the agenda, 197 Onset.
Yeah, when you read it, you read 112 or something.
119.
Or 119.
Oh, oh, oh.
No, you just read it wrong.
It said 182.
No.
In the agenda.
Yes, but on, no, it said 197. Go ahead, you're all set.
Correct, okay. I move to approve the seasonal entertainment license, weekdays only, under the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 8, 183A, for the year 2025, for Project Half Shell Incorporated, doing business as Cohog Republic, Eric Bevins, manager, 197 Onset Haft, Onset Avenue, Onset, Mass., 02538. Point Independence Yacht Club, Inc., doing business as Point Independence Yacht Club, Gregory McCunt, sorry, manager, Independence Lane, Onset, Mass., 02558. Main Street Deli, LLC, doing business as Onset Beach Patio and Grill, Frank Evangelista, manager, 182, Onset Ave., Wareham, Massachusetts, 02538. And XJ, Inc., doing business as Sand and Surf, Gerald Sylvia Silva, manager, 3194 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Massachusetts, 02538. Pending the approval of all applicable applications.
I second that.
Motion made in seconded to approve subject to all the approvals and sign-offs. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. And then we have two seasonal entertainment licenses, Sundays only.
I move to approve the seasonal entertainment licenses, Sundays only, under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 136, for the year 2025, for Project Half Shell Incorporated, doing business as Cohog Republic, Eric Bevins, manager, 197 Onset Ave., Onset, Massachusetts, 02538. Point Independence Yacht Club Incorporated, doing business as Point Independent Yacht Club, Gregory McCunt, sorry, manager, Independence Lane, Onset, Massachusetts, 02558. Pending all the approval of all the pending applications.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve subject to. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. And... So, you're only going to do that one.
Okay. I move we approve the seasonal public amusement license, Sundays only, under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 136, for the year 2025, for XJ, Inc., doing business as Sand and Surf, Gerald Silva, manager, 3194 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, Massachusetts, 02538. Pending the approval of all pending applications.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve subject to all of the required documentation. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Thank you. Now, we're going to skip down to 9B, so I'll accept a motion to, to approve the abatement recommendation under 9C.
Oh, 9C. I move to approve the abatement recommendation from Municipal Maintenance Director, in the amount of $1,945.84.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve that abatement. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Motion to accept the donation.
I move to accept the donation from the Wareham Library Foundation Incorporated, to the Wareham Free Library, in the amount of $30,000, to be used for the salaries of part-time library staff.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to accept that donation. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Motion to accept the donation.
Motion to accept the donation from Jacqueline Galloway, to the Wareham Council on Aging, in the amount of $100.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to accept that donation. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. And then, we have been asked by the Council on Aging Board itself to reduce the number of board members on the Council on Aging from nine to seven members. And they have, they met in a properly posted meeting, and they made that recommendation. We can accept this, and we also will be submitting an article to town meeting, because the bylaws have to be amended from nine to seven members. But it will be at their request. So the motion, I think, would be to accept the recommendation from the Council on Aging.
I move to accept the recommendation from the Council on Aging to change the membership of the Council on Aging Board of Directors from nine to seven voting members, no change to associate members as requested by the Council on Aging Board.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve that. And as I said, it's not part of the motion, but it will be part of the town meeting agenda. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. This next one is a road closing from Tremont Nail to the Little League Fields. So there is a, we would accept a motion to approve the road closings for that Little League Parade.
I move to approve the...
Road closing?
Road closing. Apply, for the Little League Parade on April 26, 2025, with a start time of 10:00 a.m.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I will note for the record that the police, EMS, and everyone else has signed off on this, so it will be all set to go. And as part of your app, your motion, may I ask that you waive the $50 fee?
Why, yes, that is my motion.
And would that be part of your second?
I would second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to approve and waive the $50 fee? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Yes, it is so. Discussion and possible vote to remove or revoke the $25 vendor fee for special events. In 2012 or 13, a prior select board member thought that when festivals came to town, that that cost the local businesses business. And so he suggested that we have a $25 vendor fee for each vendor at a festival, and that has been the case. That may prove to be problematic in today's world. And so I did ask Mr. Chadwick what he thought, and he thought it was great to remove it, but that's not a vote, that was only his feeling. But I don't know, what do you guys think?
How much money do we actually get in?
Less than $10,000. And it goes into the general fund, so it's not part of, you know, it's not part of a revolving fund. It's money that just disappears.
Chairman, can I speak on that as a vendor coordinator?
No.
Could I ask the town administrator whether there is any correlation between the amount charged and actual expenses incurred by local businesses?
For, I don't know what expenses local businesses, if I remember, there was two things. One, it was about some of the parking. But there's also, there are vendors that will come to those events that are state licensed that are in there. So now they've, they don't pay to the town, they can just show up because they're licensed by the state. I usually think that anytime you're bringing a crowd of people to an area, that it's good for the businesses. You know, there's, you know, on July 4th, for example, the businesses are crowded no matter what. But I love the off-season ones, like the Harvest Moon Festival, the Oyster Festival, kicking things off for folks. Those are the types of things I think are really great.
I tend to agree with you that festivals tend to bring in business, but I'm interested in what the member of the public...
He can't, it's not on here, it's a hearing. I can tell you that the festival people have to pay for police, they have to pay for ambulances, and they have to pay for fire. If they have any things that have propane tanks, or if they have tents that are over 10 feet, 10 by 10, they also have to have those inspected the day of the event. So you might spend between $5,000 and $8,000 to put a festival on. Is that a little light?
Yes.
So it might cost a festival promoter up to $10,000 to put a festival on. And if you had to then collect $25 from your vendors and hand that over to the town, it cuts into, and we're talking about 501(c)(3), we're talking about charitable organizations. So to me, I think it, again, my personal opinion, is that it makes sense to encourage our local businesses and entities to, you know, to help them do it without spending everything. Rich, Mr. Bowen?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Just to take maybe a slight issue with the characterization of the reason for the fee. There's a case, Emerson College versus City of Boston, which deals with the question of fees and whether something is a truly a fee, which means it's voluntarily paid, or an illegal tax. And one of the tests for whether something is a fee as opposed to a tax, obviously, is whether it's voluntary. But secondly, whether the amount being charged reasonably correlates to some expense that the municipality is undertaking. So, for example, it wouldn't be accurate, or perhaps illegal, to say that the $25 charge was imposed to protect local businesses. That wouldn't be a legitimate rationale. If on the other hand, the extra $25 was covering expenses incurred by the town as a result of the festival, that would be legitimate. So one of the things that you might want to consider as you do your analysis is whether that $25, which is going to the town, is covering some actual costs that we are incurring, rather than it being some type of protectionist surcharge. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification of the description of it. Again, it is a fee that we collect, the town collects, and at the end of a festival, if you have 100 vendors, you give us a check for $2,500 bucks. So it cuts in, and they have to pay, they have to pay, the festival organizers have to pay the police, the ambulance, the EMS, and the fire. So to me, it cuts into their whatever.
As a member...
And we don't, we don't pay anything, but does it cost us money to have these things happen to the town? Yes and no?
Yes, yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
There's, there's processing costs, it takes our folks away from other duties. So yes, if you're asking if there's a cost for putting them on, yes.
As a former member of several 501(c)(3)'s that put on events, that fee would be crippling. If my husband and I had to pay, well, that is why we got out of it, because suddenly we had to pay for everything, and we can't afford that. We're not millionaires, we're not even any kind of mayor, but it just, it's awful for 501(c)(3)'s to have to pay those fees. So I fully support this initiative.
You know, it makes sense to me, I think.
There's a reason term starving artist.
Yes.
They're not going to pay for lots of things, or have the availability to.
So may I have a motion to remove or omit vendor fees for 501(c)(3)'s from now forward?
Would it improve or not make any difference if we specified the fund that it would come out of? Like, could we establish a revolving fund, or could the WRA know none of those things?
It's really not worth it for the 10, the, up to $10,000 that it brings to us, but it certainly is, it's a kick to any 501(c)(3)'s, you just pointed out.
Yep.
Is it, I mean, is it just 501(c)(3)'s that this fee should be relieved from, or is it all of the vendors?
I would suggest the 501(c)(3)'s, because they are, they are not for profits.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is that your second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to remove the $25 vendor fee for special events or festivals for all 501(c)(3) organizations from this time forward. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote.
Ma'am Chibber just said, it was the vendor fees, not all.
Vendor fees, that was what I said.
I just wanted to make sure, I'm clarifying myself. It was only the vendor fee of $25.
Yes. Isn't that what I said? I don't know what I said.
I don't, it was just sort of, it was running through my mind, so I'm just trying to clarify, and I'm sorry to interrupt, I apologize.
Okay, so the motion is to remove the $25 per vendor fee for special events or festivals for any 501(c)(3) organization? And there was a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Yes. The reason I can't allow the public to speak is it's not on the agenda as a hearing. If it were on the agenda as a hearing, I could allow the public to speak. Mr. Rodrick, I apologize, but that's the rules. Thank you. Let's have a discussion, possible vote to authorize the chair to sign any and all documents required to complete the purchase of AD Marion Road, which is the building right next door.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the town any and all documents required to complete that purchase. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Ms. Corbett, reading time.
Oh.
Process for calling?
Yep, and is there a language that I need to use? Is this applied by this one?
No.
It's, I gave it to you.
Where did you put it? Where did I put it?
Can you? Yeah, I'll take it.
I think I found it.
Yeah, that one first, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Whiteside, I move...
You just need to read it. You don't need to move it.
Okay. Town of Wareham Select Board, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. Process for calling a special town meeting, March 18, 2025. Tuesday, March 18, 2025. The Select Board establishes all dates for completion of a warrant for the special town meeting. Friday, March 21, 2025. The last date opposed upon the town's principal bulletin board and the town website, notice of intention of the Select Board to call a special town meeting for April 28, 2025, and to open the warrant, Wareham Home Rule Chapter Charter 2 through 4C, at least 20 days' notice before the warrant closes. Monday, March 31, 2025, at 12:00 noon. It's the last day for petition articles to be inserted in the warrant. Tuesday, April 1, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. The last day for articles to be inserted in the warrant, 10 days or more after warrant opens. Tuesday, April 1, 2025, Select Board officially closes the warrant. Friday, April 4, 2025. The last date opposed upon the town's principal bulletin board and the town website, and deliver a copy of the warrant to the town moderator and to the Chair of the Finance Committee, WHRC, Section 2 through 4D. Monday, April 28, 2025, commencement of special town meeting. And I do not need to read the second page?
That's correct.
Oh, cool.
So that's just the notice. So we are calling the notice, and then the next document you're gonna read is, no?
That over there.
Yep. The Town of Wareham Select Board, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. Notice of April 28, 2025, special town meeting. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth. To the constables of the Town of Wareham, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in accordance with the provisions of the Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2 through 4C, and the bylaws of the Town of Wareham, Division 1, Article 1, Section 2, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the Town of Wareham that a special town meeting has been called by the Select Board to be held at 7:30 p.m. on Monday, April 28, 2025, at which time the business of the town meeting shall be transacted. The warrant for this meeting will open Friday, March 21, 2025. The last day for submission of articles to be inserted into the warrant is Tuesday, April 1, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. Petitioners' articles will be accepted up until 12:00 noon, March 31, 2025, at the above address. The warrant for this meeting will close at 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, April 1, 2025. And you are hereby directed to serve this notice by posting an attested copy thereof upon the town's principal bulletin board on or before April 4, 2025. Hereof, fail not, and make due return of this posting. With your doings, threaten, thereon, doings thereon to the town clerk, given under our hands at Wareham this 18th day of March in the year 2025. I feel like the town crier.
This is one Scrivener's error, and the Scrivener's error is directed to serve the notice on the, of this by Friday, which is the 21st of this month. So that Scrivener error is noted for the record.
Thank you.
So the meeting has been called, and the last day for submission of any articles in a special town meeting, so any petition articles have to have 100 signatures. And there we go. Next item would be discussion and possible vote to recommend action on articles for the spring town meeting. But I think we should go to hear Mr. Sullivan's town administrator's report to see whether we can get any of these other ones voted on. Do you have any things to present to us, or not?
Not on the warrant, I'm just going over, so the, if you want, so just continuing. I don't know if you, can't remember the Lopes Playground, did you bring that up yet?
No.
So it's, I thought you might doing that during announcements, I don't, if you'd like to.
Well, yeah, I'd like to. But we did announce them, so it would have to be sort of a liaison report, but that's okay. Go ahead. Talk about Bayview.
Bayview Park is continuing on for, so we're still hoping to keep the timeframe before the real kickoff of the summer. So they're doing a great job. Their four-person is on another job now, so it's, we're reaching out to them, just trying to make sure things are gonna continue to go smoothly. We hate that sort of change in the, in the middle of something, because it's, they've really had some excellent workers there. So we've been working with Vital Structures Solutions on the town hall, and we've put out a bid, so we're awarding it, and that's going to be for the investigation into the masonry, the windows, those types of things. So that, that...
What was the name of the company you just said right now?
Vital.
Vital?
Like Structures or, yeah, Solutions, yeah.
I think I read an article today about that company, and that is awesome that you're using them. I was actually gonna send that article to you.
Oh, good.
That's phenomenal, thank you. That's wow.
We're just that good.
The funds for that were approved in the October town meeting.
So that is moving along, and what we did, they're working with us. And then you bid out the subwork for the cutting into the masonry, taking out the windows for evaluation, and going through the different sections. You know, we've spent some time going around the whole town hall building with them, trying to figure out which windows they can take out, which have the least impact operations, what sections they need to look at for water intrusion. So it's a pretty significant review, so, but I'm glad, I'm glad to hear some positive feedback on that, so thank you. Thursday was the Finance Committee All-Day Budget Hearing. It is a really long day. I'd like to thank the members of the Finance Committee and the Chairperson for organizing that, and for all the department heads. It's really, it's, it's an interesting day, and sometimes it's not just about the budgets, it's about what the departments do for the community, and a good chance for a back and forth. So, long day, I wasn't able to make the beginning of it. We were at the Mayflower Municipal Health Group where they voted our health insurance rates for the year. But that's, so thank everybody that was involved with that. And then I really need to thank Mr. Menard, and then the Emergency Management Director, Mr. LaRue. They, as you know, the Faring Hill Bridge was closed to any vehicle over six ton. Mr., we've had several meetings on it. Mr. LaRue gathered the information from not just Wareham, but Marion Rochester for their emergency vehicles, including ambulances and some of their fire apparatus, and was able to get waivers for the ambulances and some of the fire apparatus to go through until the time that we've reconstructed. So that's really, it's great work, and really happy that's, getting that done. Something that was weighing heavily on us. So that's obviously gonna be something that needs to be put in the capital plan as well. Just letting you know... Just letting you know, that's about a four to five million dollar project. We're probably going to seek to set some funds aside at this town meeting from free cash, about a million dollars or so. Start seeking some grant fundings, the design will be done roughly in October, so probably going back to October town meeting, but in the meanwhile, we're seeking grants earmarks. Not the best time in the world to be seeking that with the things having dried up, but, uh, you know, it's obviously, this isn't just a Wareham issue, it is a main corridor for some other communities, so a regionalized effort may, may help yield better results.
Awesome. I have another quick question. Is this at all eligible for Community Preservation Committee funds?
No, not for that, but thank you for asking, some other people may ask that question, so it wouldn't be, it's not, um, recreational or anything. We could probably put a recreational aspect, it's just going to increase the cost, though, so.
Is that it?
And that is all.
Okay.
Just, um, recurring question from me this time, how's it looking for the future with funding from traditional sources, federal and state, for really necessary funds for the town, and especially for the schools?
I have not heard of anything being, uh, taken away. When we did the budget, which we need to give a presentation to the Select Board when, you know, within the next few weeks, uh, you know, one of the ones, one of our revenues is Medicaid, which is reimbursement that we receive for students through the school that receive services. That's about a, uh, that's just over a quarter million dollars in, in annual revenue, which is really an offset, but, uh, you know, there, there's obviously some concern. I'm concerned with the, uh, burn rate that we've seen from our own, uh, level at the, the Commonwealth level for funds, which means, you know, that's, uh, don't know how they'll support what we're giving, and we are, state aid is 25% of our budget, so. You know, that's, uh, but there has been, obviously there's concern, and some of the things that have been, if you will, focused upon could have negative impacts to us, but, you know, right now, it's, it's a tough way to go about it, because there's, there's no control, except letting folks know that, uh, this is important to the communities.
Thank you. Okay, um, we'll move on to, um, liaison initiative reports, board comments.
I guess the only thing I would say, um, this is from Bylaw Review, is that, uh, the Bylaw Review Committee has, uh, decided to pass over the earth removal bylaw until fall town meeting. In the course of working on this bylaw, I think a number of questions came up about how to make it better, and how to, in one step, rather than in two steps, put the town in a good position, whereas there's a clear bylaw in place that is, uh, commensurate with the, the other towns in our area, and also nationally. So, um, a little patience is in order there, and hopefully, uh, there will be a really good, uh, bylaw to present in, in the fall.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I think this is, maybe falls under initiative or liaison reports. Nevertheless, when I first, first, first became a Select Board member, I think perhaps Derek and Judy will recall the way I was running around like a chicken with my head cut off, because several residences from North Water Street in onset had reached out to me in my Select Board email, and I was, you know, really new to the situation, and I, my passion is to help people, that's one of the reasons I got into this business. And I finally found out by asking enough people the right questions that the Wareham Lands Trust, which owns the North Water Street Beach, thanks to the Community Preservation Committee, it was going to be holding meetings in the fall, I thought, that these people, these wonderful people who contacted me would be able to attend, and it was my intention from the get-go that I was going to be there. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it to the meeting, because my dog died, and I couldn't go. And I'm really sorry I couldn't go, because it really means a lot to me, that I wanted to help people. So please, if you're watching this, reach out to me and let me know that you heard this talk, because I really, really, really wanted to be there, thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. The Bylaw Review Committee, um, has done an extraordinary, um, job in terms of bringing a lot of information forward to the, it'll be on the special town meeting. The documents that I've seen are like 50 pages total in terms of deletions, additions, things that shouldn't be in the bylaws because they were taken out a whole long time, you know, so, a, a huge work, and I just want to say thank you to that, that committee. They, technically, uh, their term ends with the town meeting, because that's the way the committee was set up, but if, if there is another piece of business that needs to be done, then we should think about reconstituting it. And then, um, I want to talk a little bit about Bay, um, Loops Playground and Pathway. The town meeting in October authorized $750,000 to renovate the Loops Field, which was 40-some-odd years old, and, um, I was one of the original builders of the Loops Playground. It was a community build at that time. There were 1,500 people who worked over it over a long, a week-long, uh, event, um, and it, it was just wonderful. The, all of the funds that were spent on the playground at that time were raised by the community, or donated by local businesses. This time around, um, the, the old Loops Playground obviously had outlived its useful life, and so the town meeting authorized up to $750,000. Hundred thousand dollars of that will come back to the commu, to the town, because we applied for and received a park grant for a hundred thousand dollars. The really good news is that the equipment was all delivered last week and is sitting on Loops Field. Two weeks before that, Mr. Menard and his crew actually took down the old Loops Playground wooden structures. There is a really wonderful, um, uh, schematic of what the place, playground will look like, and we have, um, there are pickets being sold by Core, so if you want to have a picket on the new fence, the old pickets that were sold are still there, but there's going to be more fencing, uh, to keep people from using it as a parking lot or anything like that. It is, in fact, a playground, that's the way it was deeded to the town. It's a huge project. Today, I believe, we paid for not quite $280,000 worth of, of the equipment that was delivered. So it's really exciting. I want to thank Marie Greig, who has been working really hard to get bids on a new sign, um, to get little designs painted on the concrete wa, ways, something like that. It's just a really awesome project, and it took about, I'm going to say, more than five years to move this forward, but I want to thank Dave Menard especially, and his crew, but also Mr. Sullivan for the support that he showed in order to move this forward, so.
I feel like we should have a chance to get some last splinters in our hands from the old equipment before it's moved away.
I agree with you.
Gone, to the dump.
Um, I also, uh, I, I was thinking of something else during some of your, um, presentation. Did you mention the Community Preservation Committee for providing funding?
Oh, yeah, the, the entire $750,000 came from Community Preservation, yes, under the recreation and open space.
And I think that's a good point, when you were speaking about how it was a community build 40 years ago, that was before Community Preservation existed. So this, the funds for it are taxpayer funds, there's match from the Commonwealth, but it is tax funds, the, so it is a community build, because the community came up, stepped and voted for it at town meeting. It's, it's a different way, but there are community members, it's, you know, it was really driven by those that are interested in it.
And I also agree, we should absolutely commend the community members that stepped forward and voted for the CPA Act, and honestly, there were people who actually said to someone I know, "Oh, Wareham will never vote for that," as if we were a bunch of stupid yokels and don't understand the value of our community. I would also like to say that my husband was state rep at the time, and he was one of the people who helped found the Community Preservation Act, and helped bring it to Wareham. So I would like to thank my husband for this fabulous thing.
Well, I can add to that a little bit. In 2004, when I was teaching at the high school, I, my 10th grade students had to write a research paper, and they had to research what the effect of adopting the Preservation, Community Preservation Act would be. And those, a lot of those, um, essays were published in the local paper, and in fact, overwhelmingly, this town approved the 3% surtax, and it was one of the first in the Commonwealth to do so, so it was, again, a community effort.
And I would also like to thank everyone, because I was the Wareham Community Reporter at the time, and I am the one who got it posted on the website.
Cool.
It really does take a village.
Yeah, it does. I'm going to accept a motion from you for four sets of minutes, please.
I would like to move to accept the approve, to approve the meeting minutes of February 18th, 2025, regular session, and approve, approve the meeting minutes of February 25, 2025, regular session. And the, and to approve the meeting minutes, joint meeting with the Bylaw Review Committee, February 25th, 2025.
And?
And.
There's one more.
The approval of the meeting minutes, March 4th, 2025, regular session.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve those four sets of minutes. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Yes, it is so. Anything else to come before this board? Then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved at 7?
8:22.
8:22.
Second to that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn at 8:22, it is not debatable, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Good night, Wareham, thank you very much.
Good night.